I'd like to call this meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, July 16th. Order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Barth?
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen, Councilmember Moss, and Councilmember Bokey have been excused. We have a quorum.
Fairly. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag slid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is Proclamations and Presentations. First item under that category is the Business Showcase, and I'd ask Mr. Mike Adams of Underwater Sports to join me at the podium. Well, this is a really kind of an extra pleasure for me. I have a card buried somewhere in my safe at home. It says I was certified in the Philippine Sea about 39 years ago. My wife and I have dove in the Great Barrier Reef in Iceland, and all four of our children, who are now adults, were certified by the time they were 12 or 13 years old. So, we recognize what a great activity scuba diving and underwater sports are, although I must say I never quite adapted to cold water. So, it's a pleasure to read this and make this a recognition of a local business. Much like the waters its customers explore, there's a lot more to underwater sports than what's on the surface. Yes, this is the place to go if you're looking to purchase dive gear, dry suits, wet suits, flippers, regulators, masks, gloves, and other scuba gear are sold from the retail store. You can also get your tanks refilled. But underwater sports is more than a place to get your latest gear or your air tank filled. It's a place to get connected to the South Sound's dive community. This is where you will meet divers who want to share their experiences with others. The store is also the spot for newcomers looking to learn how to dive and receive certification. Founded in the 1950s by Gary Kefler, underwater sports has always been a store where people come to share their passion for diving. A skilled freediver, at the time he started the business, Kefler was at the forefront of introducing scuba diving to the public as it gained in popularity. Kefler has since retired, but the company remains in his family. His three children now operate six stores up and down the I-5 corridor from Edmonds to Olympia. That includes Lakewood Store located at 9606 40th Avenue Southwest. The store has been in its current location for 27 years before Lakewood was even a city. Because of this commitment to offering a welcoming place for divers of all levels and abilities, and its longevity in the community, Lakewood City Council recognizes underwater sports as its July 2018 Business Showcase. So, thank you very much for taking part in our community.
Thank you.
Being one of our nice, stable, small businesses here, and we hope that you put this someplace prominent in your shop. So, if you'd like to say something.
Thank you.
That will take a obligatory shot up front here. We now move to the promotion ceremony of Detective Sean Conlon, and we have Chief Zarro.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson and council members. As the agenda states, we do have a promotion ceremony. We also have officers being sworn in, and it's actually the same oath, so we're going to have them all come up at the same time. And if I could have Judge Susan Adams join me at the podium?
So, I'd just note that we have a promotion ceremony, the Chief's Commendation Award, Appreciation of Service Award, and a swearing in of officers, and Chief, take them in any order you want to.
Thank you, sir. If I could first have, and I'll call them up by name, please just come up one at a time, and then we'll have you all sworn in up front. Detective Sean Conlon, Officer Jamin Dobson, Reserve Officer Travis Smith, and Reserve Officer Isaac Vargas. And for the mayor and council members in our audience, a little bit about each one. Sean Conlon's been with the department since we were founded in 2004 and has done outstanding work both as a patrol officer and an investigator, and I'm thrilled to be able to promote him to detective. Officer Jamin Dobson came to us recently as a lateral transfer from the Port of Seattle, and I want to say that, you know, Jamin had his choice of departments to go to, and he chose Lakewood, which happens to be where he lives as well. So, it's a great pickup for us. And then Travis and Isaac are both our first graduates from the first reserve class that we hosted here in Lakewood, that was taught by our own officers in our own facility at the police station. So, something very, very special about each of them, and I'm thrilled to be able to promote them and swear them in tonight. So, without further ado, I'll have Judge Adams step forward and read the oath of office. Yes, please. Mayor Anderson and council members, next, we will have our Appreciation of Service Award, and I would like to call up Disabled Parking Enforcement volunteers David Meyer and Kurt Illeg. And as I have them come up, I'll explain a little bit about why we are acknowledging them here, and it's because they're retiring. They've been with the program since 2009, and they recently decided to retire after putting in over 500 hours of volunteer service to enforce the disabled parking laws here in the city of Lakewood. We also sadly are missing one, and that's Roy Johnson. The three of them have been partners since 2009 and have been all-in in the program since then, have worked together, and actually decided to retire together. Well, shortly after their retirement and before we were able to present him with his recognition, Roy passed away. He actually had his service today, and unfortunately, we weren't able to attend, but was honored by his friends and family there. And I, you know, regrettably can't honor him here tonight for his service, but for their years of service and hours of dedicated volunteerism in enforcing the laws of Lakewood for disabled parking, I'm acknowledging both David Meyer and Kurt Illeg with an Appreciation of Service Award. And lastly, Mayor Anderson and council members, I'm presenting a Police Chief's Commendation Award to Officer Michael McGedigan. And if Mike could please come forward? And I'll read the nomination as printed on the certificate. On May 7th, 2018, while walking through courts, Officer McGedigan was approached by an elderly gentleman asking about a ticket he had received, stating he had court the next morning at 8:30 a.m. The gentleman asked about lodging for the night, since he lived in Lacey and wasn't in the best of health. Officer McGedigan offered to have the gentleman follow him to the Best Western near City Hall in order to make sure he got there all right. Upon arriving at the hotel, Officer McGedigan discovered that the gentleman, who was a military veteran, didn't have enough money to pay for the hotel room. At that point, Officer McGedigan paid for the hotel room out of his own money, and Officer McGedigan also came back the next morning and helped the man get to court and then helped him explain to the prosecutor prior to going before the judge that he had both health and memory issues. This entire event reflects great credit upon the Lakewood Police Department and is just one example of Officer McGedigan's true commitment to making a difference in the community he serves. I could not say it any better. This really is who Mike is, and this is somebody that works in our traffic unit. When people think traffic officers and traffic enforcement, they don't often think compassion. However, that's exactly who Mike is. And when I was telling him, you know, that he was receiving this commendation, and he asked what for, and I told him about the incident, and he just kind of shrugged and said that wasn't a big deal, I was just helping him out. So, truly, this does show who Mike is, and I couldn't be more proud to have him represent us as a department or as a city. So, Mike, for your actions and your assistance on this day, I'm presenting with the Police Chief's Commendation. And Mayor Anderson, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the last item in Proclamations and Presentations, which is a proclamation declaring July 28th, 2018 as Pierce County Trails Day, and I ask Ms. Heather Rowley from Forever Green Trails to join Councilmember Simpson at the podium.
Well, before I begin, I'd like to point out that I am very happy to have been asked to read this in as much as I make extensive use of the trails in and around Lakewood. So, with that in mind, I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas interest in outdoor recreation along trails, including walking, hiking, cycling, horseback riding, birding, and mountain biking is on the rise with Lakewood and Pierce County residents, visitors, and tourists. And whereas trails in Lakewood and Pierce County enhance the quality of life for our citizens, improve public health outcomes, increase tourism opportunities via outdoor recreation, and provide an alternative mode of transportation for jobs, work, and play. And whereas creating safe access to open space through a connected system of urban and non-motorized trails is a major element in the Lakewood Legacy Plan, and whereas completion of the Tacoma-Tahoma Regional Trail Network will result in 9.6 million additional miles of bike usage annually and 9.3 million additional miles walked annually, translating into $1.4 million in total healthcare savings, and will help 31,000 new residents engage in healthy walking and biking activities. And whereas the city of Lakewood has joined together with other Pierce County jurisdictions to create events that encourage citizens to celebrate the value and enhanced quality of life that trails bring to our communities, promote trail awareness, and establish an ethic of and participation in public trail stewardship. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to enhancing our trail system and is celebrating Pierce County Trail Day by hosting stewardship events along the trails in Fort Stillicum Park and in the Chambers Creek Canyon. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim July 28th, 2018 as Pierce County Trails Day in the city of Lakewood and urge all citizens to support this event by visiting, using, beautifying, and protecting our trails. Proclaim this 16th day of July, 2018. Signed, Mayor Don Anderson. Would you like to talk?
I just wanted to say thank you for all of our partners and everything. I feel like I have to lean down. Yeah, we couldn't do this work without you, and we wouldn't have these trails without all the jurisdictions in the county. So, thank you so much.
We now move to the public comment section of our agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on at 30 seconds. The red light comes on at the three minutes when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and see residents such as Mike Branstadter, Lakewood, Washington. The first person who has signed up is M. LaRocque.
Thank you for letting me get my three minutes in here. I'm here to talk about fireworks, and my concern is, well, first of all, I don't know what the laws here in Lakewood are for fireworks, or if, in fact, there are any laws about fireworks. But this last Fourth of July, the fireworks were out of hand. Living, I live on Veterans Drive, and it was like a war zone out there until 2:00 in the morning. As a youth, I used to enjoy shooting off fireworks, firecrackers, but not the As a youth, I used to enjoy shooting off fireworks, firecrackers, but not these bombs that they've been shooting off and rattling the windows and making it feel like a war zone out here. I'm just hoping that in the future, there can be some sort of limitations on this activity. I'm sure many of you have dogs and know how upsetting it is for them. I keep my dogs inside, but of course, you can hear it. And I would just like, you know, the council or whoever handles this sort of thing to make some effort to cut that back, because it's ridiculous to have to feel like you're under siege in your own house. So that's basically the reason I'm here today. I hope that this won't be skipped over, and then next Fourth of July, we'll be back to the same thing. Because in fact, what happens is, they save a lot of the fireworks for the New Year's Eve celebration, which doesn't go on quite as long, but still includes some pretty heavy artillery, I guess you could call it. I see there are lots of fireworks stands all around the city, and I'm just concerned that it's kind of turned into a Wild West situation. And I understand that the police department is limited by the number of people that there are in the force and, of course, all the situations that happen. People shooting up fireworks into the trees, there's lots of trees in Lakewood, and they're getting dry at this time of year. Great opportunities for fires, so I'm on the clock, so I just want to say I hope that the council can take some steps in this situation. Thank you.
The next person who signed up is Greg Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I live on Veterans Drive as well. I'm Mr. LaRocque's neighbor. I have lived there with my wife, myself personally, for 20 years. It has gotten extremely dangerous. I am also a CERT volunteer with the West Pierce Fire Department. It is amazing the amount of calls that they get stretched that they have to go into with, along with their water rescues and everything else. In fact, this year, there was approximately 119 fires for water rescues, and that was enough to keep them busy all through the day and night. I know that our first responders are stretched, as is the Lakewood Police Department. All I want to ask is one simple question. Can you please take a serious look at it? All the other municipalities around us don't have, they have a ban on fireworks. In doing research, I know that the city of Lakewood does not gain revenue by firework sales. Is that correct?
We'll have a staff member follow up with you.
All right. I sent you an email also, sir, and the deputy mayor and the city manager. That's all we want. This is my first time appearing before the council. I just wanted to see if we can get something, anything, an action on it, please. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
With all the people who've signed up, that doesn't preclude you from speaking. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium and identify yourself. You're not precluded from speaking if you didn't sign up. Just approach the podium right now, and if you want to speak. Just identify yourself, and you have your three minutes.
And I live on Motor Avenue, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring it up, but I did receive this plan about changing Motor Avenue, and I attended to the first meeting that you had.
If you, you're free to speak at this time, but we are having a hearing on the downtown subarea plan, which includes, I believe that's the flyer you're holding up.
I'll wait for that, thank you.
And if you want your testimony to be included, you should speak at that time. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Hearing none, declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of July 2, 2018. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of July 9, 2018. C, motion number 2018-37, authorizing the execution of a Fleet Maintenance Services Agreement with Systems for Public Safety for a period of October 1, 2018 through December 31, 2022. D, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of April 26, 2018. And two, Landmark and Heritage Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of May 24, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to have removed? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Branstad, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion carries. Now we move to Public Hearings and Appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the downtown subarea plan.
For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tiffany Spear, Special Projects Planning Manager for City of Lakewood. If you'll recall, last week, there was a lengthy study session on this topic, and so tonight's city, excuse me, city package for you had the same materials as was provided a week ago. There's information that we're going to be putting together as staff as follow-ups to some of the questions that you voiced last week, and you'll be getting that before next Monday's study session. What we're talking about is an eventual action by the council to consider two different ordinances. One would be for the Planned Action Ordinance under SEPA. The other would be an ordinance that includes the downtown plan itself, the related development code, related comprehensive plan amendments, and then a few changes within your Title 18A. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Spear? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll now take public testimony at the public hearing. The procedure is very similar to the procedure I explained for public comment. Please approach the mic when called. We'll have three minutes to testify, same yellow warning light at 30 seconds, red light when your time is up. Identify yourself by name and city of residence. The difference from the public comment session is that the testimony is limited to the subject of the downtown subarea plan. There are no one who has signed up on the public hearing sheet, but we have somebody who wishes to testify. Just identify yourself and tell us who you'd like to.
I'm Judy Toud. I live on Motor Avenue right here in Lakewood, and I attended the first one, but I have missed some of the others as we were out of town. But I really appreciate the thoughts and ideas of how we're going to change it, and I had some ideas that I thought maybe might be used. One is to have a wine tasting shop, which I think would be very useful here in Lakewood. I spent 18 years in a very small town in Missouri, and it was only 10,000 people, and we had a wine tasting shop. You could go in, and they had a very assortment of wines, and you would sit with couches and chairs and lounge there and have your wine in a glass or by a bottle. You would be served fruit and cheese and crackers, and I think it would be something that would do well here. Also, another idea I had would be a cupcake shop. I was looking for a specific bakery that would give cupcakes, and I have not found anything. I had to go to downtown Tacoma. And so I think Lakewood could really use something like that. And one of my other ideas was to have large planters somewhere placed in our downtown area that, you know, when you go to another community and you see this, it makes it a beautiful place. And so these are my ideas, and I hope you'll be interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the, testify, I should say, with respect to the downtown subarea plan?
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. I concur with the downtown plan. I participated in most of the planning since the Motor Avenue thing started, and it looks good, at least so far. Now, the next problem is making things happen. So I know it's going to be a long-term process, but I think it's a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on the downtown subarea plan before we close the hearing?
I'm Darrell Stutzman. I live on Motor Avenue. I've never been to one of these meetings. It's very interesting. I would like to congratulate you and thank you for all of the good work that you're doing on the roads, the sidewalks, the beautification of a lot of it. This is a wonderful community. I've lived all over the United States, moved 10 times as an executive with warehouse company, and Lakewood is doing a wonderful job. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify regarding the downtown subarea plan? Anyone else wishes to testify with respect to the downtown subarea plan? So if there's somebody hiding out there who wants to speak and hasn't yet, please follow this lady up to the podium so that you can be queued up.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Helen Mitchell. I live on 10508 Douglas Drive, right in front of Active Lakewood Park. And my question is, I know that you guys are planning opening a road, connecting gravelly to Active Park, and from looking at the map, it's going to be, it's going to cut through my property, or, I mean, that's one of the plans. How is this going to affect, because it looks like there's two houses there that you guys, I know you guys are planning on, like, opening a walkway to connect the apartment, like, low-income apartments that you guys are proposing on putting right behind Barnes &amp; Nobles. What's the plan? I wanted to know what the plan is. Is that going to affect me, my property?
At this point, no plan has been adopted.
Okay.
We're taking testimony regarding the plan.
All right, thank you.
Please step forward.
How are you? My name is Ahmed Al Horasi. I'm renting a lot in the south Tacoma way. About, I'm coming about the lot, the lot for, my English is not perfect, just I speak what I have. I work with, for the city of Lakewood about the permit, about the license, about the land I have, I rent land in south Tacoma way, the 20, 90, 21, south Tacoma way.
Sir, do you wish to speak about vehicle sales licensing?
Yes.
That's going to be the next hearing. This is on the downtown area plan.
Oh, it's next? Oh, I'm sorry.
You'll have an opportunity, but it's going to be after this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
But stay close, because it's the next item. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the downtown area plan? Anyone else wishes to speak about the downtown area plan or testify, excuse me? Hearing, and seeing no one, I declare the public hearing on the downtown subarea plan closed. We now move to the next public hearing, Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on interim regulations on motor vehicle sales and rental establishments in all zoning districts located in the city's incorporated limits for a period of six months.
For this, we have Mr. Buhr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On July 2, the City Council adopted Substitute Ordinance Number 689. That ordinance contained three features. It established a minimum lot size for motor vehicle sales of a half acre. It prohibited motor vehicle sales in NCT Zone, and it prohibited motor vehicle sales Level 1 in the C2 Zone. This evening, because this was done as an interim regulation, the council is required to conduct a public hearing, and that's the purpose of this public hearing this evening. These zoning regulations are in effect for a period of 180 days. The next steps is that the Planning Commission has begun the process or will begin the process of reviewing motor vehicle sales this Wednesday, and they will be examining existing regulations, the proposed interim regulations, in addition to reviewing other regulations in other communities. We expect to bring this back to a completion sometime in August or September, with this coming before the City Council in October. Following tonight's meeting on August 6, we will return to the council with a series of findings of fact related to these interim regulations. And with that, I complete my presentation and give it back to the council.
Any questions for Mr. Buhr or Mr. Branstad?
Just to clarify a couple points. The interim regulations that precluded for six months initiating these types of businesses anywhere in the city, that they have no effect on any existing sales and rental businesses?
It, for a period of time, makes existing business, some existing businesses legal non-conforming.
But they will still be able to operate as they have been?
Yes.
Okay, being able to go and do that. And that there were perhaps some businesses that were in the process of starting business. Were there any businesses that had, were far enough along in the process that they were grandfathered in to be able to open?
There was an existing conditional use permit that was before the hearing examiner. That particular application was vested, so that application moves forward. There was another application pending where individual made application, but the application was incomplete. Because it was incomplete, it did not vest, and so therefore, that project stands off to the side until the completion of these interim regulations.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Buhr? All right, now we will move to public testimony. This is a public hearing on interim regulations on motor vehicle sales and rental establishments in all zoning, all zoning districts. No one has signed up. There was a gentleman who was interested, who apparently just left. Does anyone wish to speak or testify with respect to the interim regulations on motor vehicle sales? Does anyone wish to testify regarding the interim regulations on motor vehicle sales? Please step forward. Last call. Does anyone wish to speak with respect to the interim regulations on motor vehicle sales? Seeing and hearing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to Ordinance Number 690, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Number 690, amending Chapter 10.12 of the Lakewood Municipal Code related to temporarily reducing speed limits in certain zones.
For this, we have Ms. McCain.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. This ordinance was brought forward by the Public Works Department and particularly our new director, Mr. Bucic. He is unavailable to attend tonight's meeting. Effectively, he is requesting to amend the present code so that he will have the authority vis-à-vis the city manager to reduce speed zones in certain areas under certain conditions. Particularly, he's concerned about construction zones to protect not only the traveling public, but the workers in those zones. Particularly, he's concerned about construction zones to protect not only the traveling public, but the workers in those zones. The manual and uniform traffic control devices has extensive, the MUTCD, rules and process for doing temporary measures like this. That's referenced in this particular code as well, provision that we're asking the council to adopt at this time, this ordinance. But effectively, this ordinance gives authority to the city manager and/or the designee to amend or change speed zones in certain areas like construction zones on a temporary basis to protect the traveling public and workers in those zones.
Thank you. Questions from council? Motion? It's been moved by Mr. Simpson. Seconded by Ms. Barth. We adopt ordinance number 690. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Bransdatter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly agree with the intent of ensuring that the city manager has the authority to modify, particularly for safety purposes, speed limits when there's a temporary situation that would need that. I think, though, that for us, this is a this is a policy question, and I believe it would be appropriate to not only provide guidance as to allowing speed limits to be reduced, but to establish some policy about when they would be restored. So I move to amend the proposed ordinance to include a new subsection C, which would state temporary controls will be removed when the city manager or designee determines that conditions no longer warrant their continued use, and that the existing subsection C be re-designated as subsection D.
It's been moved to amend the motion. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Barth. Now move to discussion of the amendment. I believe that would normally yield, that would normally yield to Mr. Bransdatter, but I believe you
I could reprise my previous comments, but, you know, I think it's just, it's almost a piece of housekeeping. If you provide a way to do something, there needs to be a way to undo it.
Let me make it clear. I know that Mr. Bransdatter presented this to staff earlier. Does legal counsel see any issues with it?
No.
I was reminded of the need for the ordinance in general this morning as I pulled out on the gravelly drive in the construction zone, and someone who, with less than satisfactory driving habits, was passing the line of cars in the one-way paved route by driving through the construction excavation area at a high rate of speed. Unfortunately, all they did was cause everyone to need a car wash, but if I got their driver's license, I would have used the chief's number. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Well, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Amendment passes. We now move to the amended ordinance number 690. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call for, I'll call for the question. Will all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The motion carried, or the ordinance is passed, the motion carried. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is no unfinished business.
Is there any new business to come before the council?
No new business.
Then we go to reports by the city manager.
I have an update on Summerfest. And it's, when you hear it, you'll know who it's coming from. So based on the many phone calls and emails and drop-ins and visitors to City Hall today, the Lakewood citizens and Summerfest visitors are still buzzing about the amazing Summerfest celebration on Saturday, July 14th. There are many, many positive comments regarding the music, food, trapeze artists, classic cars, motorcycle jumpers, aerial trampoline jumpers, vendors, free arts and sports activities, the pet parade and movie at the park. There was something for everyone. There was an amazing team of staff and community supporters helped plan and execute an event that the whole community can be proud of. How they managed what is estimated to be a 40,000 visitors in and out of the park is truly amazing. Also, just to let you know on the number of counts on the vehicles, staff put a vehicle counter on Angle Lane and had 13,800 cars come in between 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. That did not include the people accessing this area earlier, such as the vendors and the athletes, or cars entering from the main entrance at 87th and Elwood for soccer tournaments, the car show, triathlon, and vendors. So you can expect our Parks Director, Mary Dodsworth, to send out another update once they gather all of their information. Another item is on the fireworks. The police chief, Zaro, is expected to provide a second quarter update of police activity or police report. And as part of that presentation, he'll include an update on the fireworks. Some items that are scheduled on the city council calendar is on July 25th. Between 11:30 and 2:00 p.m. is the second quarter employee appreciation event at Fort Silicon Park. On July 26th, between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. is the city manager's roundtable presented by the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce at the Environmental Services Building at Chambers Bay. And to register for that, go to www.tacoma-chamber.org/eventsdetails2018citymanagersroundtable. On July 27th, we have two events, one from noon till 3:00 p.m., the Lakewood's Choice 2018 Block Party and Resource Fair at Springbrook Park. And then we also have between 8:30 and 3:00 p.m., a ceremony at 11:00 a.m. for the 22 SBCT Brigade Community Family Day at Harry Lang Stadium. And then on August 7th, we have National Night Out, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. Kraus? Mr. Bransdatter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, I think, and while I appreciate that the police chief is going to bring us what data he has regarding fireworks and instances that were officially reported and responses and things to do that. I guess I would ask that we look more broadly in the staff about the different types of feedback that we've been getting from the community regarding that. I think this is a, there's always the question of enforcement and what are we doing? But we, as we heard in public comment today, and we've heard from a lot of ways, it's not so much about did we this year have an increase or a decrease or something, or enforcement about doing that? But it's really a question of trying to look for a way to see its community sentiment, you know, it's a community sentiment around having as few restrictions on fireworks as we have. We have, we have some, and they're going to do that. And so that there may be some other elements of the staff that would also have feedback from the community that, as we have looked at, as we discussed at our last meeting, of trying to set at a time in the future for the council to have a discussion about, really, how do we want to regulate fireworks, or, and beyond that, about, and what role do fireworks have to play in celebrating within the community to be able to go and do that? So if you could maybe gather some information more broadly than just from the police department?
So is, there be any objection to, in the interim, referring this to the Public Safety Advisory Committee to gather information and report back to us? Because, you know, we have time, date, and type of fireworks restrictions, none of which are followed. And most of the complaints seem to be surrounding the time, the dates, and the type of fireworks which are banned in Lakewood. Those are the big problems. So not only do we, I think we need the public sentiment and the history of reports and complaints and incidents. We also need some data with respect to other communities that have taken action and have as close proximity to Native American fireworks, fireworks stances, we do, and what the impact really is. It's gonna have some, but who knows? So I'd like to
I think having the public
We have until next June to take action for the next year. Because it has to be more than a year in advance. I don't know the exact date, but I think it's June, it's the end of June. It has to be, I'm for sure, before next Fourth of July fireworks period. And that would be effective for, any change would be effective for 2020. So. What?
I would add that I would think that maybe we should ask the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to consider whether they have any recommendations for alternative ways of celebration in the community that might lessen or mitigate the need for individual groups to do that. I don't have a specific way involved, but that is a discussion that they could have and consider.
Ms. Barth?
I would suggest just letting Public Safety and Advisory run with this. If they want to meet with the Parks Department for ideas and creative things, then I think that would be, come under their responsibility, and then bring it to us.
Yeah, I am a little bit afraid if you went to two committees, it might be like going to two lawyers and you get three opinions. So if staff would follow up with that, and get it on Public Safety Advisory Committee's agenda in plenty of time so that we can revisit this before fireworks time next year. Any other questions for Ms. Kraus? Comments? Council comments? Mr. Bransdatter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I did attend a meeting of the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee, the Subcommittee Regarding Transportation and Economic Development. That, it was a discussion with about representatives from about 15 cities from around the state of looking at really what is the things that, on a statewide thing, that wanted the Association of Washington Cities to press forward and try, try to look to make happen. That there was a lot of desire for various types of tax increment financing tools to try to get more of them, even though you couldn't get an umbrella tax increment financing issue through without a constitutional amendment. There was also a good deal of sentiment around trying to look at the transportation situation and trying to find a way to do more frequently a series of small transportation measures rather than a large one every dozen years to be able to go and do that so that emerging needs can be met more often. And the AWC staff is gonna look to see who they can find as partners for that to try to work to look to go to do some of those things. That work is really just starting to determine the AWC legislative priorities. There are meetings scheduled for both August and September with the idea of the priorities being finalized in October. And our lobbyist was a participant in the meeting I attended by phone and was able to do that. The last really significant item was there was not a lot of consensus around how much give, intake, and compromise should be done around the issues of small cell deployment. There were folks that said, you know, we really need to really dig in our heels on local control and not have a state policy dictated to all the communities. And there were others who thought that it needed, it ought to be a state state solution. So that's gonna, I think it's still an issue that's gonna be out there, and it's not clear where AWC is going to land, given that they have a new legislative policy director this year. Their director for more than 20 years' standing, having retired. I did, another note, I did get to the Summerfest late in the afternoon, but there were still many people there at 5:30. Lots of venues with a lot of interest. The most popular venue seemed to be Shade Trees. But went through, and folks that I talked to have all spoken very positively about their experiences on that date to go and be there. To include those vendors that I talked to that thought it was well worth their time. That's why I have a fair.
Ms. Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm back from vacation, and it's actually hotter here than it is in Montana. So I did get home in time to go to Summerfest on Saturday and was very impressed, and staff should just be running around patting themselves on the back. I know the community is doing that as well. The first stop I had was the Sister Cities performance at the Pavilion. And, you know, it was, it was just the perfect spot. It was received well. There was good attendance. And people were really excited and talking amongst themselves as they sat there and enjoyed the show. And it was really quite the thing. I also wanted to know which car did you pick for the mayor's award?
The 1957 red-orange Chevy convertible.
Sweet. They had some beautiful cars out there, and, you know, the pride of ownership as you go, I know which one you're talking about. The pride of ownership as you go through and talk to the folks out there. They're just delighted to be there. They're delighted to show off their toys and let's see, what else? Oh, well, no, I'll save that for the public safety. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to co-tail on my colleague's comments about Summerfest, it's the best day of the year so far. I really enjoyed it. If I had been judging, I would not have picked the 1957 red-orange Chevy. I would have picked the 1948 maroon Buick. But, and I ran into the mayor, and I tried to wheedle it out of him, and he wouldn't go there with me. So we'll let that go at that. On Friday morning, and I'll let the mayor speak a little more on that, I did attend the change of command for Madigan Army Medical Center. With regard to, and I apologize, I know we're sort of beating this, this whole thing about fireworks to a little bit. fireworks to a little bit, but one of the gentlemen who spoke to, in fact, both gentlemen who spoke tonight are from the Lake City area, and I attended the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting on Thursday night, and it was standing room only. And they made it very clear where they stand on this fireworks issue. They want amended. They're tired of the noise. Those two men were simply a lightning rod to what that area is, is thinking. So, I will not say any more about this. We have a public safety committee, that is their job, and they can, they can press forward on that. Also in that meeting, a, an idea was put forth that I thought was interesting. As we know, there's that fairly good-sized piece of land, I believe it's north of where the school was. There's a, a large, about two and a half, three acres. And an individual made the comment, why doesn't the city's Parks Department work with the Clover Park School District to create a park there in the interim? And I said that I would bring that forward, which I'm sure it will go forward, and the individual who represented the school district didn't have anything to say. So I don't know where that'll go, but I think it's an idea worthy of consideration. Several people made the comment that there are a lot of children in that neighborhood, and they would like to have their children have a place in which to play. What else have I got here? One other comment that was brought up, and this is, this is one that I have seen, and several people there on Thursday night talked about it. There are individuals flying their aircraft well outside that five-acre radio control zone. I have seen them over Elwood. I have seen them going under tree branches, past the northern boundary of that land, that area, and they're going to walk one of those drones right into somebody. I, I have to admit, I was thinking about this, I've been thinking about this because I use the park extensively. The mayor was standing there when the chief asked me if I lived in the park. That's how much I use it. And I find the noise of the drones obnoxious, and when I have spoken to some of the operators out there, they are less than civil. When they are flying their planes over the dog park, you have a problem. When they're taking their drones across Elwood, and several people that were at the Neighborhood Association meeting also made the same comment. So I, I think maybe we just want to keep that in the back of our minds, that quite frankly, I think five acres is too small, and I think we're on a collision course with a number of people who use the park versus the very few who are flying their drones and planes in the park. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, since you were surrounded by a number of naval officers on Friday, I thought the Great White Fleet had come back to Lakewood, I will turn it over to you.
That brought me back to my old ice cream sale days.
There you go.
There were, what, Mr. Simpson is speaking to is the Megan Army Medical Center Change of Command, where now Brigadier General Mike Place relinquished command, but he's staying connected. He is going to be the deputy commanding general for the Western Regional Medical folks, which, but that takes him to Hawaii, and his boss, Brigadier General Mastor, is here.
That's right.
Because the army, I hadn't realized that, that they double switched, because they moved it away from Madigan, they moved, moved it back.
That's right.
And so they had a nice ceremony, and the Navy doctors came down from Bremerton to show their support. They told me they felt they were overdressed when they saw the army fleet people in duty uniforms, and they were there in their dress whites. But they looked clean.
They did, they looked sharp. They looked very good. They stood right out. In the army, they'd be called targets.
That's, on Saturday, like others, I attended the great festivities out at Fort Silicon Park. It turned into a most-of-the-day activity for me. I started the triathlon, and by that I want to make clear that I didn't run a swim, run a step or swim a stroke, I fired the gun to start the triathlon. And so I have participated at least five years running now, without ever having broken a sweat. But that was a good event, well, well, well-participated in, and then I had the pleasure of making some opening remarks, being able to peruse the expanded footprint and extensive array of food establishments. The one comment that kept coming through, and I, I'm glad to hear Mr. Branstadter's comments, was that people didn't have to stand in line for food, and there wasn't that there weren't any customers there, it was just that the lines were short enough it turned over. And like last year, when we had people inundate the, or kind of overwhelm the capacity there. Evidently, between Ms. Martinez's sales acumen and word of last year, I mean, it must have ramped up, there were at least twice as many food establishments there this year, and people were raving about the fact that they had such variety, and that they could actually go up and buy something and get back to doing whatever they were doing. As Mr. Simpson indicated, I got to help judge the car show, which also means I get to contribute to Partners to Parks to buy the award. It's, Charlie Maxwell indicated that, I'll pass this on, he, he is retiring from running car shows, and for a couple of reasons, he has backed out of others, but he wanted to assure me, although his public pronouncement is that he is not organizing car shows anymore, this one's special, and he'll still do it. So, I think they had about 25 more cars than they'd ever had before, plus they had a lot of cars that had never been there before. So, the word spread, and it wasn't that it was without competition, there are other car shows that folks can go to the same weekend, and they, yeah, they can come here. So that evening, after some communications difficulties that Schumacher helped resolve, I was the keynote speaker for the Phil Am League of Pierce County's annual dinner. That went well, and one of the interesting comments I received was from one of the performers at Summerfest earlier in the day, from the Filipino group, dance, dancing, dance group, who were very complimentary when, about saying, well, you know, it isn't even finished yet, but the pavilion's great, it has shade, it's a good stage, and it has shade for the, for the performers, and it's a really wonderful place, and we can't wait till next year. So, that was another happy participant. Today, I was part of a meeting that included Ms. Dodsworth and Ms. Shields regarding the Beecher Foundation's efforts to do a prototype, let's say, it's a beta test or concept test of their healthy foods initiative, which they've done hundreds of times in schools in King County on an education level, but they're ramping it up and extending it to parents and sustained, healthy eating habits. And the consortium grows, the Clover Park School District, which is a linchpin of the effort, was all in. The Callan McGovern of Emergency Food Network is kind of a driving force, bringing folks together. There's been quite a bit of money raised. In addition, Beecher Foundation's paying for about a third of it, the city's contributing $25,000, the county's contributing money, the Dimmer Foundation is contributing money, and several others, and there are others lining up, look like they will. Boys and Girls Club is one of the great facilitators, and it's going to be really in the focus toward the Springbrook neighborhood. Two grade schools, Tai Park and Lakeview, and then Clover Park High School for either ninth or 10th graders, depending on how it integrates with their health program. So that's moving along smartly, and they'll be presenting a report about a week into, about a week into August. Ms. Dodsworth will own it. So that's all I had. Anything else come before the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could take one of that, that the recognition today of the gentleman who had been in the disabled parking volunteers, I just noted that in our agenda, only Mr. Meyer's name was mentioned, and if I would ask that the minutes show that the two gentlemen that were here and the third gentleman who was referenced, that, that our minutes at least show that we recognize all three of their contributions to that program.
All right. Is there anything further? We're adjourned. No. See what happens when Waylon isn't here?